Fall order this meeting of the Region 12 Board of Education at 7:03. For our secretary, please come in and talk.
That way I was like, I'll find it. All right, Joe Abdella, Greg Kava.
Here.
Victoria Sayon, not here. Stuck in Pollock, I'm here. Angela Marchiverolo, Alex McNaughton.
Yeah.
Justin Mongley, Jen Cody, Jane Sargent, Pete Tagley, Mary Weber. Nobody's online, but we've got one.
Okay, we have nine. All right, at this point, let's go to the recognition, recognition of visual art students.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Once again, we're excited to recognize our talented artists from across the district. The works of visual art that are being shared this evening represent students' response and thoughtful design, the choices they made stylistically, and in many ways, an expression of their identity, their beliefs, and their perceptions. We certainly want to give a shout out to all of the art teachers who work diligently to guide and support our young artists throughout the year. So students, when I read your names, please come up to receive your certificate of excellence, and then stand by your beautiful piece of artwork. So we'll start with Kip Fason, Chapag Valley High School. So Kip worked, the medium was chalk pastel. And as part of Kip's AP portfolio, he investigated how artists create depth in a work of art. This piece explores overlapping, the concept of overlapping, and how objects get smaller in the distance. Great job, Kip. Yes, thank you. The next is Emily Grant, also Chapag Valley High School. Not here this evening. Okay. So just to tell you a little bit about Emily, it was, the medium was digital photography. And after exploring abstract photography, she planned, photographed, and edited images for impact using strategies that supported abstract concepts while learning to use a macro lens. She, she did an outstanding job. So congratulations to Emily. Next is Noe Quijada. And Noe is from Chapag Valley Middle School, grade eight. So Noe used the medium of block printing. And inspired by the artwork of Japanese printmaker Katsuhiko Hokusai, students explored landscapes and the techniques of relief block printing. Noe did an outstanding job. Congratulations. Okay, our next artist is Amelia Conway from Washington Primary, grade five. So Amelia's medium was a Sharpie and a colored pencil. Students learned about optical illusion art. And she spent several art sessions gradually laying Sharpie and pencil to create depth, contrast, and a focal point. Did an awesome job. Thank you, honey. The next artist is Cadence Armbruster from Booth Free School, grade three. So Cadence's medium was colored pencils, crayons, and a Sharpie. After exploring self-portraits from old masters to modern day artists, she learned about facial measurements and created her own self-portrait. Really a wonderful job. Thank you, Cadence. The next artist, Claire Tuchalowski from Burnham School, grade one. So Claire's medium was watercolor and Sharpies. She used shapes to create several unique birds. Inspired by the artist James Rizzi, they then out students outlined their designs with Sharpies and used watercolor paints to make warm colored birds and a cool colored background. What a great job. Thank you, honey. Again, congratulations to all of our artists. We're always so proud of each of you. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Kava if you want to say a few words and then maybe a brief intermission.
Once again, some amazing artwork here. You guys have just done a tremendous job. I mean, they're all wonderful, and thank you so much for sharing with us. I think what I'd like to do is have a brief break, so board members can come over and ask you about your work. We'd love to hear about it. So we'll take a short recess. Get the board members back. Well, thank you all for coming tonight. This was wonderful. Thank you for sharing your kids' artwork with us, and we're just thrilled. So this was great. Yeah, tremendous talent. Okay, we are going to move on the agenda to the College and Career Accelerator presentation. So I'm going to turn that over to the superintendent to introduce the theme.
Okay, so this evening, we have individuals from Ed Advance to talk about the College and Career Accelerator. We have termed dual enrollment, which came up during the budget process when we spoke. We have Susan Lebansky, Dan Caciola, and, and I, well, I thought it was Taylor Van Trup. No, okay. And they're here this evening to address the program, which is a pilot for next year, and also to answer any questions that you may have. So thank you and welcome.
Accelerator, but we are also thrilled to see your students' artwork, the absolutely beautiful work that students were able to create. So very nice beginning to your board meeting. Thank you for inviting us here this evening. We are going to go through the PowerPoint. So we're going to scoot over a little bit just so that you can also see it as well as read it in front of you. The College and Career Accelerator was really born out of giving the students an opportunity, thank you, for dual and concurrent college enrollment. That means students will be able to take college courses either given or presented by a college professor or by one of your own teachers here in Region 12 and receive college credit while they're still in that supportive, welcoming environment of a high school. In addition, they also will have exposure to careers and really get an idea of what they may be interested in pursuing as they get older. So that was the first slide, sorry. So we're going to go on to the next slide. Sorry, Ben. So really, being a former superintendent in this area, when you're in the education, you know K-12, and you live in that world, but you don't know what happens with the students afterward. So K-12 lives over here, higher ed lives over here, and the business world lives in a different silo. So three different silos, and for years and years, we were trying to bring them all together. Well, Ed Advance brought the two of us together to really do that, to be the bridge, to be the liaison, to make this happen, the communication between all three different silos. So the goals of this program are to really increase concurrent and dual enrollment, offer more classes for your students, more opportunities, as I said before, build your staff capacity. So maybe you have some staff members who really want that challenge and really want to be able to teach those dual enrollment courses themselves right here at Region 12, and provide work-based learning experiences. So students have a better idea of what they want to do as well as what they don't want to do through that exposure. So we are going to be showing you a video, and it reflects our four different pathways, manufacturing and engineering, education, healthcare, and public safety. We're really going to focus in this next year for Region 12 on the manufacturing and engineering, and then build out. But I think the video gives you an idea of what this program is about. If it doesn't work, it's okay. We'd just like you to be able to see some students who have already experienced the program.
Welcome to the College and Career Accelerator. The Accelerator is a dual enrollment college and career pathways program specifically designed to provide enhanced and accelerated college and career access and readiness to students in our region. The Accelerator acts in partnership with our districts. It is not a magnet program.
Drive impact that's scalable so that we can really solve the problem of making sure that we're giving people outstanding careers.
At the heart of our unprecedented opportunity for students is the chance to simultaneously secure workforce credentials, certificates, and even an associate's degree, all while still in high school. The Accelerator provides opportunities in four distinct pathways, manufacturing and engineering, education, healthcare, and public safety. Our program delivers real-world applications with students diving deep into work-based learning experiences like job shadows, internships, and pre-apprenticeships.
They're impressive kids, and I think we've put them in a position, along with their hard work, we put them in a position to be ready to go out into the world and, and earn a living and, and make themselves and their families proud.
The Accelerator is based on the proven Hampton Engineering Careers Academy model and expands it to our entire region. Students can earn up to a 50% tuition cost reduction by transferring their credits to a four-year college or even gain acceptance into highly selective universities.
I'm a first generation. Joining HECA, it helped me figure out more of my college path, right?
Accelerator students will remain enrolled in their home school district, able to play on sports teams and do other activities with their friends and classmates. They will also have their dual enrollment classes scheduled into their regular school day, either taught at their home school or at our state-of-the-art Regional Learning Center in Torrington. At the Regional Learning Center, we have dedicated lab spaces for CAD, 3D printing, CNC, mechatronics, and a robotics field, as well as dedicated classroom space for all four of our pathways.
It was the involvement of STEM using science, technology, art, and math, and basically be able to produce a physical thing, something I could touch. I could initially just, wow, I created this.
Ed Advance is providing free transportation to all Accelerator programs, and districts won't be receiving a tuition bill either. The Accelerator has developed strong partnerships with higher education, received backing from the governor's office, and support from local industry, all aligned with Connecticut's visionary plan for economic and workforce development. The Accelerator looks forward to partnering with you and accelerating your students' futures today.
I'm sorry this sound was just a little bit off. Like, I did want to tell you, the teacher that, who you see in the video is going to be our teacher, and that is a teacher that Dan had worked with before in a previous district. And we are overjoyed that he's going to be joining our manufacturing and engineering program.
Yeah, thank you. So actually extraordinarily excited that Gabe Jenkins is going to join us. He, he, he lives walking distance from Hampton High School and is coming up here because he believes in the model. That's just, I think, testament to what we're building here, and I'm truly, really excited about it. You know, I, I think about this in terms of, who are we worried about in K-12? Right? That's, this program, I think Sue alluded to before, hits three different institutions, K-12, higher ed, and industry. But who are we worried about in K-12? All school districts, all schools have our students that we know chronically have no plan, right? And man, we want to, we want to help those kids. That, that's clearly a group that we should be targeting with intensive, career-focused opportunities and instruction to certificates, high-paying jobs, no question about it. But the college persistent data is extraordinarily interesting because 62% of all bachelor degree seekers graduate within six years. That means 40% don't graduate in six years. These are our kids who we think we're doing right by. We're sending them off cap and gown. They're going to their university, 40% of them, national average, are, are getting that degree. And the number's even worse for kids that we send to associate degree programs. So I'm an advocate for thinking about career-focused and academically rigorous training as being appropriate for all of our learners. If a kid's interested in STEM, I, I want them to consider the careers and opportunities in Connecticut and how we could lead them in that direction. So, listen, why do kids not succeed in higher ed? And the national data is all over the map on this, but there's some things that really come across. Cost and loans. It's, I read yesterday that next year, the first American universities will top out at $100,000 room board and tuition per year. I, I don't know how we got there. Demanding academics. We do a good job of preparing kids K-12, but sometimes it's a step up to that next level in college. And what we want to do is embed more rigorous curriculum focused on careers. And advising, you know, I think first-generation students is a, is a classic example. I know my children, I feel like I'm going to advise the heck out of them, right? But not every kid and family has that opportunity. And so how do we, how do we take those things, right? Connection to content. What does a student want to study in college, and is it related to what they studied deeply in high school? How do we wrap that together in a package? It really increases the likelihood of what I call access and readiness. How do we make whatever they do after high school more accessible, and how do we make them more ready for it? And so that's the next slide, access and readiness again. College certificate. So one of the programs that we offer, one of the tiers we offer in all our programs leads to a certificate. You know, highly-supported, career-focused college courses within high school. Sometimes three courses, a three-course sequence, sometimes as many as 24, 30 credits, right? So eight or 10 college classes, but leading kids to a, a college certificate that can lead directly to the workforce to, to reasonable or high-paying jobs, or it can be transferred to higher ed and give kids a chance at success at higher ed. Incorporate on-the-job training, internships, apprenticeships, lead directly to skilled trades. The next slide talks about the associate degree. If we grab kids in ninth grade, we have a plan at the College and Career Accelerator to drive students through a 60-credit associate degree while they're in high school. Now, they could parlay that to a 50% tuition reduction, just like our, our video showed, at State University. Without question, they could parlay that to select the college admissions. Or they could parlay that high-level skill set into the kind of careers that Connecticut is dying to get people working in that pay. You know, there's a range, but can pay six figures in some cases for these manufacturing careers. And so I'm going to run through this quickly, just to be respectful of your time, the manufacturing tiers. We have a CAD user certificate. This is a three-class sequence. It can be done in one year, and it gives students the capacity to speak the language so that if they go into industry, they know what's being talked about. It also transfers to other colleges and universities. And it also is the first three classes of the two-year sequence, the tier two, which is the CAD mechanical, which is much more in-depth and gives students the skill sets they need. We have a mechatronic certificate, which is 10 classes, technology, engineering, education. That is the first half of a CTE teacher certification as an associate's degree, and the manufacturing engineering associate's degree. I'll just plug back in hand in the, the district that we saw on the video. Our first cohort of students out of that program, 25 students entered in 2019, graduated in 2023, 19 of those 25 graduated with an associate's degree at the time they graduated college. I'm going to pass off to Sue to jump into the next slide.
So before I go on to education, I just want to emphasize, students participating in these courses while they're in high school builds their confidence that they can do this. They can really apply themselves and achieve college digest and, and earn those college credits. So it's not so foreign. It's not so scary. And when they go and send in their applications, they're leg up. So they can put that on a resume. They can put that on a job application. They can say, hey, I was so responsible while I was in high school, whether it's one course or it's 20 courses. They can say, hey, this, I've accomplished this. So in the education tier, which we'll actually be starting the following year in the 25, 26 school year, there are several offerings or tiers as well. So the Child Development Associate Certificate is the very first level. That's really just a one-year with summer certification. It's a national certification that students can get that is, includes 480 hours of fieldwork. So it's a lot of fieldwork. Students have to really know that they're going into this. Usually it's for 11th and 12th graders. That's where we're focusing. Tier two is Early Childhood Education Certification. That's eight courses. So if students are saying, I want to explore, I want to get my feet wet, I want to try this education world, and maybe start as a paraprofessional or work, start working toward that associate's degree, that's where they begin. And then tier three is for students who say, you know what, I've done tier two, I want to move on to tier three, or I know I want to be a teacher, I want to be a teacher in early education, pre-K three, or I want to be in grades one through six, or I want to go for secondary certification and my degree in secondary ed. So those are all the options that we are offering students. That's much more comprehensive than what we are offering in 25, 26, the CMT, the EMT, basic courses, first aid, CPR. And when we actually talk about the different fields, you'll see why we chose these pathways to offer to students because it does connect back to what Dan was saying in terms of the workforce environment and the needs of Connecticut as well as the nation.
So 13% of Connecticut's GDP is in the manufacturing sector. I was with Paul Lavoie, you saw him in the video twice last week, and he's talking about 2030, Connecticut being at full employment in manufacturing. Right now, there's a 60,000 worker shortage expected in that same timeframe. So how are they going to close the gap? They're going to close the gap through worker training, but they're also going to close the gap through automation, robotics, and AI. In other words, these jobs in Connecticut manufacturing are, are moving to robotics. And what the people will be doing is training the robots, programming the AI, maintaining the automation. This is, this is engineering-level work. There is still space for the whole range of jobs within the manufacturing sector. But the push, where we need workers, is, is in the programs like in manufacturing engineering, we need CAD-trained people. You know, I, I think the other, the other caveat is the graying of the workforce, right? The 55, 65-year-olds who are in manufacturing and will be retiring in the next decade. And I think I'm going to jump back to Sue so she can talk about the education and healthcare workforces, but similar stories.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to say too. You'll see a theme in terms of, no surprise, graying of the workforce in all the different sectors and pathways. So last year, the Connecticut Education Association, CEA, did a survey of teachers and of care professionals, other folks in education, no surprise, 75, 77% dissatisfaction, frustration, maybe leaving the profession altogether or retiring and saying, hey, I want to do something else. And last year, when we started the year, it was 1,300 openings for teachers, 1,300 openings for paraprofessionals. So 2,600 openings across the state is huge. And so desperate need, big shortage area, no surprise in the areas of special education, math, science, and certainly for parents in special education. And I think what was really surprising to us, we can go to the next one. What was really surprising to us was, as we looked at the healthcare pathway, 16% of our GDP is, are, is healthcare. And so, you know, we really need students who are going into the health professions, nurses, skilled techs, long-term care. And some of you have, may have already experienced it, even to get a healthcare practitioner, get a, a primary care doctor, right, is very, very difficult. And Connecticut's not alone. This is nationwide. So to have this deficit, it is far-reaching because we don't even have enough professors to go and really observe those students coming up. So they have to cap the students who are coming up at 25% because they don't have enough professors. And 52% of our ends are also retiring, leaving graying workforce, as we were saying, for manufacturing too. I think even more desperate is our next slide, which is our public safety workforce pathway. EMS, firefighters, police shortages statewide. Every time we go to a career fair, there are police and firefighters represented. We have emergency, I think at one of the news shows this week, they were doing EMS deserts in Connecticut, and there are pockets all over the place, and you know our rural areas. It takes a long time to get those folks to these areas to really meet a crisis and an emergency. And so that's really frightening. If you have somebody in your family who has desperate need, you're calling 911. You want to make sure that we have healthcare professionals and utilities, firefighters, and police to respond. There has been a public safety workforce pathway developed. However, in the meantime, what's happening? That need is still there. And then on a, we can go to our next one. On a happy note, shifting to our work-based learning. Unfortunately, Taylor Van Antwerp couldn't be with us this evening. She is our work-based learning coordinator. And she is the person who's going to be coordinating with students, students from Region 12, meeting in small groups, meeting with them individually, helping them figure out in connection with your counseling team at, at Region 12, really helping those students talk about the experiences or, or the field trips that they've taken, or what's working, what's not, if they're on the job, so that really we can have meaningful experiences for your students so they really can make some good decisions for their futures. Because I think it's so challenging. Because I think it's so challenging for students at eighteen to say, oh, I've got to pick my major, I've got to make a decision for the rest of my life. What I want to do based on, on what? And they haven't had those experiences. So like Dan was saying, it's super important to make sure that students are very informed as they are graduating our high schools and they're going out there and they're having those meaningful experiences. And that's what Taylor will be um working on to connect your students with, within your region. Because we want our students, let's face it, I, I always wanted my students to come back to my town, my community, a- and I'm sure you feel the same. Come back to their families, come back to their grandparents, um, come back at least to Connecticut, even if they go away. So that hopefully they can benefit our communities and, and strengthen them as well. So we want to have opportunities for them, that makes that desire, so it's super important.
Yeah. So the CCA advantage, um, at the bottom line, our mission at Ed Advance, and so our mission at CCA is to service our districts and our towns. That's, that's who we are, we're here to service you um and what your needs are. And, and in talking with Lori and talking with Don, um, we've been informed about what you want from us. And, and, and that's what we're trying to build. Um, and the other piece of it is we're developing a sustainable, long-term work-based learning program that's going to significantly impact Northwest Connecticut and, and frankly, the entire state. We get back to the three institutions, K-12, higher ed and, and industry. And we're at the center point of those three, and, and we just want to help your kids integrate through them as best as we could to meet your needs. That's our questions, we're happy to take.
Um, I see that your program are more career directed. Could you talk a little bit about what the difference between your program and say AP courses would be for, for students?
Yeah, totally. Um, so AP courses are, are tremendous, they're, they're um certainly something that is advantageous to students. Dual and concurrent enrollment um are college courses. Um, so students, i- you may offer dual and concurrent enrollment in other areas. Uh, um, UConn, for example, has an ACE program um that high schools take advantage of. Our, our courses, our, our college courses, I think the best way to frame it is in the transferability. Um, and when I think of transferability with AP, um, students who get a three on an AP, the transferability is about sixty-five percent to colleges across the country. Dual enrollment, if a student passes that course, the transferability is in the eighty percents. So, you know, is Colgate, just to make up a school and throw one out there, are they going to accept it? I, I can't predict that in particular. What I can say is the national trend is acceptance rates at dual enrollment is higher than it is at AP. Thank you.
So where do the degrees getting issued from?
Awesome question, CT State, um, which is the new institution of the combined community colleges. So Nogatuck Valley, Northwest CT, Gateway, Ashnontuck, Quinnabook, I can't name them all. Um, but they've come together to create one institution. Our partner in higher ed is CT State Northwest. Uh, you know, the CEO, Michael Rook, has been a tremendous uh, um, partner and collaborator in us building this. Um, some of the programming that we offer is programming from other campuses. Um, but we're filtering it through CT State Northwest. Ultimately, the degree and certificate will say CT State.
Um, so that, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to add, so we are making sure that all the courses that they are taking are transferable to state schools. And like Dan said, we can't ensure that all of their credits will be transferable to private institutions. But I know in Dan's experience, the most of predominant um number, percentage of the courses were accepted by even private institutions.
And some of the courses are being taught at the facility, but some of them are also online, is that right?
Um, just philosophically, I, I don't love online. Um, I, I want students to have a rich supportive experience. At our facility is where we're going to drive most of the instruction. There may be a place for some hybridization of courses, where a little bit of the work is put online, but then followed up by the teacher in person. That's kind of the model we talked about with Don for region twelve. Um, that way there we could maximize the content in limited number of hours.
And the professors then are at college level professors, I guess, or are they, are we using educators like in from like with master's degrees and whatnot, or are we using um more like experts in fields? Or you know, what's the kind of the combination of the?
Yes, yes, um, right. I, and, and sometimes, and you, you could speak to this too, but sometimes finding, um, you know, a pink unicorn is hard. Um, you know, and uh, but in Gabe, I think we have one. Um, and um, we, we have uh, uh, some other people that uh, were vetting to teach in the program as well. Um, you know, the vetting has a couple of different layers. Layer one is obviously, um, are they qualified to teach the college course? Because these are college credits and certificates that we're doing. And layer two is, do they have the capacity to teach high school students? Um, and we need them to cross both of those boundaries and then be content experts. Um, and so this is, this is where some of the, you know, rubber meets the road for us and we're working hard at it.
Right, yeah, that's just one of my logistical questions, if we're having freshmen or sophomores taking those classes, they, you know, in our district, we would require them to have a certain like certificate or a formal education. So they're going somewhere else, who would those educators be? Um, and I just have one more logistical question first.
Can I just add, I'm sorry, so no, go for it. One more thing, um, CT State does require that there's a master's in that content area in order for them to teach.
Got it. Um, who there, do we have a guidance component for this, or do you offer guidance to help students select who might be eligible to take these classes or?
So we are going to work in concert with your counseling department, Sophia's been a part of our, our um, our conversations and our meetings. And that's been wonderful, so she's definitely on board. But they will work with Taylor Van Antwerp as well, and she's going to be that liaison and that bridge. Because we want there to be a connection between what's happening in the program and communicate, constant communication with region twelve as well, so that it's going back and forth. Sure. Is it okay for us to, I don't, everybody's board structure is different, feel free.
Are you at all concerned with like the mental health aspects of this for the students? I, I mean, I, you know, I'm sitting here thinking and, and you know, it's slightly concerning to have, you know, to put all of this pressure on, on a ninth grader. Um, and, and I realize that this would be an extreme example, but you know, even seniors in high school face this pressure. So now we're, we're shifting it down um to children who can't keep their hands to themselves. So I mean, have you guys looked into this, is there some component to that in this program?
Totally understand, I have my master's in counseling as well as administration, a couple of different hats. So we do want to make sure mental health is, is crucial, it's important, it's, it, our students need to feel good about what they're doing and not overwhelmed. So I think that our students who are really feeling like, and research suggests this, they can express themselves similar to the art, right? Where you find your niche, where you find, okay, I can really be who I am or express my interests or explore those things more. There's a cohort group that they will go through in these courses. In addition, they will be supported, they will be supported by the teacher who's there, small class setting. They will also be supported by Taylor Van Antwerp. We also have counselors within the building. If they need extra supports, we have a principal who will be running the program as well. Um, if there's any need, and certainly your counselor's here will be having that consistent conversation. So if there's any needs or students are feeling overwhelmed or pressured. In addition, we give them a lot of academic support. And I think it really helps to have teachers who there are accessible to them. Constantly throughout the week, um, online, whatever they need in terms of, you know what, this is too hard, I, I don't get it, I'm struggling. So that we have a lot of fail safes for students as well.
So and, and also, are you concerned that this takes away from, from a high school experience from students? I mean, if this gets added, does something have to get taken away?
So, um, I'll answer that, and then I want to go back to the previous question too, just to back that up. Um, I love the idea that it's a partial day. So um, we'll pull kids for a couple hours, um, but then get them back for baseball practice in the afternoon. They, we want them to be part of the Chapaud Valley High School community. Um, if a kid goes over to the uh, uh, Ag Science Building, I would assume that's pulling them out of the main building sometimes too. Um, you know, so my thought is, is that um, this, this may help um, create uh, uh, connections for kids to school, to content, to what they're interested in. Um, in ways that are driving them in the doors here, uh, um, that may not have existed previously. At, at least generally for all schools. Get back to your other point too, li- listen, the whole concept comes from a, a wellness idea about kids. I, I'm a counselor as well, admin as well, um, and this is built specifically to, to, to couch students in um, a highly supportive structured environment. It gets them to achieve um, what would be challenging to achieve. If we just do content to kids, I'm on board with it. We're throwing content with a heck of a lot of supports, um, so that we can really help, if not ensure, lead them to success. Um, and that's going to boost confidence and mental health, and that's our, that's our thought process on that.
Can I, I just wanted to add one other thing, this is a choice, this is not, they don't have to do this. They can take as many or as few courses as they want to. And so i- if they're saying, whoa, you know, I, I'm done after one, that's okay. Then they accomplished what, they, they earned for it credit in one of the classes.
Uh, no, I was just going to add, um, going back to counseling, we had Sophia from the get-go. And just so we all know, this is a first-year pilot of this program among other schools as well. And that was number one important is, we're, we're working with the students who want to do this. We're going to be having, you know, intensive discussions with not only the students, but their families as well. Look, we want to offer multiple pathways, if it's, you know, agri-science and dual enrollment. All of those things, we want to make sure that students have all of those opportunities. We might get ten students or seven students, and that's okay. So part of it also is being able to have a high school student, one of the things we want to teach is what kinds of choices I make, how I think through those choices and how beneficial they will be to me in the future, that's part of learning. So I hope that helps a little, and Don, do you want to add to that as well?
Um, I, I appreciate Justin's typical interest in the human side of this and worry about the wellness of our kids, which is what we start with. And I know that when you look at the way this program is built and the way it's supported by the state and the forces that are underpinning it, it can sound a little transactional. It can sound like, you know, this is a pipeline to industry and the students are a cog in that pipeline. It's not that way, thank you for asking. I've looked into it very carefully, and what we have right now is a vetting program where it starts with a quality relationship between our counselors and the students. And the counselors identify students who want this and who are precocious enough to have the wherewithal for it. And then can move forward with high expectations, but high supports from Ed Advance and from us. And right now, just to contextualize it, we have six students who are asking for this and who counselors think would be, it would be good for them. And they're not freshmen yet, because we're piloting this, they're going to be upper-class people. And I think that, um, I just am so glad to see, you know, you're an educator, it makes sense that you're wondering about the human side of it like we did. And I think it's going to be win-win, when we take care of our kids and their needs first. I also think there could be a benefit to um, to our state and our workforce, and it could be very symbiotic. But I promise that we've made a great study of making sure that we don't put any kids into a situation that they can't handle.
Uh, can I ask another logistical question? How, how, someone who wants to get an, an associate's degree in one of these, these pathways, what does that look like hours over four years? How, how do you break that down? Because it sounded like, when you, when you talked about the number of hours in a typical program, I, I started here trying to figure out how you're going to put those in.
So we have a program that, um, and I'm, I'm happy to share it. It's early, early on, it's not as intense, right? The, the first year students are taking the same courses they would take for the certificate. Where it gets more intensive is where we start to integrate the genetics. Um, we have to look at, um, how do we, a, a dual enroll math? How do we dual enroll science? How do we dual enroll social studies and English? Because that's really where the trick is, right? If, if a student's English class counts for both high school graduation and the college associate degree, they're not doing more hours. It's just that that particular content that we're able to put them in meets the standards of both. So, and, and that's, that, that's something that, you know, with the leadership team here in district, we'll map out specifically for region twelve.
All right, well, how, how many, how many hours in, in typical are, is, is absolutely required that they spend time in the summer for each of these programs?
Yeah, um, for the associate degree programs, you know, there's definitely a summer component. Um, I, what we decided is that we were going to really stack it toward uh, uh, the close of the school year, late June, um, early July, and right before the school year opens in August. I'm a firm believer that fifteen-year-olds should ride their bike, um, and, and, you know, eh, have, have a summer vacation. So what we're going to try to do is build those programming on the sides of summer. Um, summer's super interesting because in, you know, eight to ten days in two weeks, um, in five-hour segments per day, we could bang out a full, you know, three-credit college class. Um, so that's, that's also in terms of, of, of cohort building, in terms of team building, in terms of getting the kids in space together. And that, I, I think the most important part of it is, those classes have to be fun. Like, you know, we're bringing them in for the summer, we want them to be having a good time. Um, some of the certificates certainly require potentially summer. Um, I, I would think, you know, i- if we need to get hours and work-based learning, um, there may be some opportunities in the summer for that. But those then become paid opportunities. So you're looking at a seventeen-year-old who might want a part-time job anyway. But now we're going to help them get a job in an early childhood ed center, which is the pathway that they're building on. So that's how those components potentially could come together. In some ways, it's individualized, you know, and, and that's what, you know, the work is at the school level.
Thank you. Other questions? Oh, yes, you, you have a question? Uh, you want to talk into one, so we pick up the reporting.
So I guess, oop, tripping over things, my question would be, how will this program affect the Connecticut's pact? Um, you know, like for kids, I mean, that's a relatively new thing, where the first two years are a hundred percent paid for. Will this program be in lieu of that if these kids decide that they want to partake in this?
No, it's a great question, so it doesn't impact at all. So once they apply, eh, the requirements are still the same. If students take dual and concurrent enrollment classes, it doesn't, you know, influ- influence or impact pact at all. So they can still apply, they can still have free tuition, as long as they've graduated from a Connecticut high school. They haven't gone to some other college, formal college, dual enrollment, concurrent enrollment is fine.
And then I guess part two of my question would be, um, when I was going ahead and looking at the pathways that you guys are proposing, at least for the healthcare, let's say, and the educational tiers. Um, I know that the Connecticut State uh, community colleges also have transfer tickets with most of the state universities. How will these credits actually transfer to that? Meaning if they are doing a uh, healthcare pathway, and let's say they want to become a BSM. How is that going to help them get into, let's say, the RN program? how is that going to help them get into, let's say, the RN program at Nagatuck Valley? How, how does that, I guess, transfer? Is it specific or, or can those credits automatically count as an associate's degree to continue into that program?
So i- it's a nuanced question that you ask, and I think the answer has some nuance to it. Does it transfer? The answer is, that's actually the resource that we use, right? That, that, that Connecticut Transfer Portal, um, there's, there's the Yukon Transfer Portal. That is the resource that guides the transfer eligibility as, as well as articulation agreements with private schools. Specific programs, though, are really, in terms of entrance to the program or at the discretion of the program director, and obviously are impacted by the applicant pool at any given year. So um, I, I'm gonna tell you that a student's gonna get a leg up. I saw students come out of hand and got into Yukon Engineering, even though of Yukon Engineering typically takes students pre-engineered. They bypassed that and went right into the engineering program. So but was that an anomaly? Was that because that student was extraordinarily special? Was that, I don't have enough data to tell you. What I'll tell you is it's nuanced and yes, they'll get a leg up. I don't see any guarantees on specific program itself.
Okay, other questions? Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you very much. And thank you to Lori for being so supportive and the administrative team. Don and Mike and um, Sophia, it's been fabulous working with you. We look forward to continuing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll move on to public comment. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on a matter on this evening's agenda? Any comments on this evening's agenda? Well, hearing none, we'll move on to the cons- oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I didn't see you here. No, thank you, Tim. Okay, other public comments? All right, we'll move on then the consent agenda. On the consent agenda this evening, the Board of Education minutes of twenty-five, twenty-two, four. Is there anyone who wishes to take those off the consent agenda for amendment or questions or anything else? Hearing none, uh, those minutes will be deemed adopted. Uh, reports and recognition, um, at the last meeting, we had a question over um, the need for someone from the board to be involved with the uh, the, the foundation. Uh, when I discussed that with Nicole, it appears that that, uh, what they're looking for is less uh, someone coming and, and reporting back to the board and more, they want some help. They need help in constructing their, their bylaws, their operation, how they're going to put this thing together. And um, and, and also in interfacing with counsel on that. Um, I think they're not even close to the issue of how do you raise money and who do you contact? And how do you get those networks put together? So I think it's really at a beginning stage. They're looking for assistance in doing this. And so I've made the decision that I'm going to go there and assist them uh, with it, and then we'll see where we go from there. But I think that we want to make sure we get this off the ground in the best possible way so that it goes somewhere. And people are looking forward to it. So I wanted to just report back to you on that. Uh, superintendent's report.
Yes. So the purpose for it right now would be to get, basically get the, get it up and running, right?
To construct it, yeah.
And then in the future, the, because I, I honestly don't know much about this, and I would love to devote more time to this, maybe at a next board meeting. So I guess, are, is it like creating like an endowment, like we, we are fundraising? So there's also that facing public face of the community, like someone who would need to um, have relationships with people. I, I guess I'm seeing, like on the one hand, you're saying bylaws and like getting the ground, like the structure of the organization up and running. But then we also would be, would we be involved in fundraising, raising money? Like, there's more to it, right?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I don't, it, it's, it's too early to say how that's going to look. Uh, right now, they're just trying to get the thing functional, to get it up and running, to, to get it structured in, in a way that can permit the raising of funds to use to uh, to basically enrich the curriculum and enrich the experience for students at Region 12. But that, that's, that's another step down the road to figuring out how that's going to go and, and how best that ought to be. And I think that's going to be involving, uh, you know, interfacing with individuals that have uh, experience in this. Uh, but, but that's not the, that's not the mission right now. That's not what we're doing right now. Right now, we're trying to get the thing structured. So that's, that's what I've been, been told it is, yeah.
Um, how many board members can we serve on the committee? I've had a few um, commi- uh, community members ask me, I mean, for uh, eight months now, I've had a couple of people come up to me and ask how they can get involved. Um, and what the structure of that looks like and what the board's involvement is. So will there be an opportunity for more of us to join?
By probably at some point, but I'm not sure because I don't know how they're planning, how, how the, the board that's ultimately put in place is gonna, is gonna think that through. I mean, this is, they're really at the stage where they need to establish the, the, the pieces to allow this thing to move forward. Because right now, they've, they've got to organize how it's going to function separate from, you see, right now, the, the, the group that's involved is, is, is basically the, the people that are acting for all intents and purposes as trustees and Chappagh Fund. Now, this is going to create a new structure uh, in terms of having, that, that's going to continue to exist, but it's not going to be the same board as the board of the foundation. So they need to create the structure uh, for how that's going to look. And uh, they're looking for assistance.
This is their committee. It's not our committee where
Well.
I think structurally is what I'm confused about how, like, because as it was described, well, well, let
I was like, that's
So just to clarify, right now, it's the Chappagh Student Project Fund. They are a five oh one C three incorporated nonprofit that works exclusively to support Chappagh kids with their senior project. They're working with Shipman and Goodwin to revise their bylaws and their corporate charter and their name to expand their role to be the education foundation. So the people who are on the board currently do intend to stay in some capacity, maybe some on committees, maybe some as full board people, board members, and they would like to add board members to the structure of the organization. There is going to be a limit as to how many people from this board can also be on that board. So a liaison would work between the two without actually being on the board. And what they're asking for right now in terms of a liaison is they want to hear from the board what the board's goals are with the education foundation. So I do think that they are working with Shipman. I think that they are fine at this point in terms of the organizational documentation, but they want to understand what the board would like the goals of the foundation to be.
We haven't discussed, right? We don't know what the board's goals are yet.
Well, I think we've talked about, I mean, it's not something that hasn't been talked about. I've been talking about this for three years.
Yeah, but not publicly, not
Yes, publicly. Well, we, we haven't had a, we haven't had a meet, we haven't had a meeting on it. We will have a meeting. We will talk about this more. Uh, but I think we need to see the lay of what exactly they're looking for. Uh, I mean, what, what we've talked about to date has been the, the ability to have funds in order to enrich the program, to give students opportunities in various areas of the curriculum, across the curriculum. I think one example we talked about, uh, what was, when we first did the planetarium, we talked about the thought, and I, I spoke about this publicly a number of times, where we talked about desire to be able to, um, the, the desire to be able to give kids opportunities. I, I wanted to see any kid that's truly interested in astronomy, given the opportunity to attend NASA's Space Camp in Huntsville, Alabama. It's an amazing opportunity to get to work with people from, that work in NASA's internal structure, their mission control people. And this is an opportunity that if you, it's usually, it, it's, it's for students of between their, in the summer, between their sophomore and junior years. That was one example of how if we could figure out a way to get some kids into that program, to give them that opportunity, this would allow them to continue their, their studies in a more meaningful way. And we want to do that in other areas of the curriculum, not just there, but that's one example of, of how this thing might work. The idea was to find enrichment opportunities to improve the educational outlook of kids in our system. That was the purpose of this foundation. You know, it's, so that I think that, that's what was discussed, and it was, it was talked about, but only briefly here. It was mostly talked about in, you know, in various other settings, but uh, but, but it was, it was something that occurred to me would be a, a great enhancement for the educational uh, program here. So I, I think we're going to have to talk about it. We're going to have to have a session on it, probably at our next meeting. Um, but, but I want to go, I want to see what they're looking for. I want to see if they, how we understand it, and then we can come back and we can get a set of concrete goals that can, that can be presented to you.
Do you think at, at our next meeting, we could get someone who's, you know, familiar with senior project, who's done a lot of senior projects over the years, just to kind of give us some sort of an overview, just to, you know, so we can kind of see what we have, like how the tradition of, you know, helping students enrich themselves works here. I'm obviously not a finance guy, so forgive my ignorance.
Well, I think we could probably, I think we could probably, um, we could probably do that, but I don't think that the, the purpose of this foundation is that that the senior project piece of it's going to be a piece of it. It's not going to be the foundation. It's going to be part of what the foundation does. It's going to become a subcommittee of the foundation. Is my understanding of what their, what the board's intention is, uh, is, is to be that. So I, I, I think we need to get, uh, we need to get a sense of uh, of of how serious, you know, uh, this can be and uh, and, and, and what our thoughts are. And we're going to need to be talking about this as to what, what the board members think that this can accomplish, other than what I've outlined, which the original idea was to en- enrich the program, by creating opportunities.
I would like to see one of those, um, you know, courtroom hierarchy bulletin boards, you know, of like one, like the overall committee with the goals. And then you mentioned senior project in one committee. So like, what would other subcommittees be? Like, you know, how organizationally, how that would work? And that's something
No, I think that's something we, I think that's something we can do. I think we need, we need to start the process. We need to see what their vision is in terms of what they're thinking of, what they're going to do with the existing structure. And then we can come back in with the, what we believe to be, should be the goals of the foundation. It's going to be a process, but it shouldn't take too long. And I'm, I'm, if, if we can line this up for our next meeting, we will do that. It's not the meeting after that, but we try to see if we can't line this up for a general discussion of this. Um, I almost wish we could do it as a, I almost wish we could do it as a, as a retreat, but I'm not sure it's enough for that entire evening. Uh, it might be an hour, but we'll see.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like, I, that flow chart that you mentioned, I'd like that idea. Because every time somebody said the board, which board are we talking about? Are we talking about this board, that board, or is there a third board, uh, you know, somebody else? So I, I'd like to sort of understand what a flow chart, I'd like to see a flow chart too.
That's, it's my understanding is it's going to be an overarching foundation for women, subr� under it for the various functions. That, that's what I understand to be the structure they're looking at. And so the question is, what are they looking to work on the board? And how can we, how can we
So at the last meeting, Cole, you presented saying that you were asked to come to the board to request a liaison from the board. Is that right?
Yes.
So the conversation that Greg is saying that that has since changed since last meeting, is that? So how has it changed from your perspective, from what originally was asked to what it's being now?
So I don't think it has. The
Okay.
Student Project Fund is still looking for someone from the board to come be a liaison.
Okay. And so this
Really what, what they conveyed to me was that they, they have a goal right now. They have a purpose right now.
Yeah.
It's to help kids with student, with expenses related to their student projects as seniors.
Mm-hmm.
So, and they want to continue that purpose as a committee of the board. So in talking with them and being at their board meetings, a board is going to be um, comprised very much like ours. There's going to be committees and then one board. Um, so the student project will become a committee, the student project fund will become a committee of this larger educational foundation. And then they want to know what those other um, goals the board has in mind for the foundation, like Greg's point of saying, um, talking about Space Camp. Like, they do want to have a committee that offers micro grants to teachers and students, financial projects that don't otherwise fall into the budget. So that, and they would like that process to be that someone would apply for one of these micro grants by a certain date, and then they would give annual awards, much like a community foundation does.
Yeah.
Um, but then they have questions like, you know, should they be supporting specific fundraising campaigns? One thing that came up um, at that meeting, because they've been approached by um, other citizens in the community, is, you know, does the board want to see a campaign, a fundraising campaign supported for turf fields?
Yeah.
Um, there are private citizens who want to help support that.
Yep.
Is that something they would want to do with education? So they don't want to um, put the effort in to repurpose this existing foundation, um, which, you know, there's finances involved, paying the attorneys to read the documents, and then come up with something that doesn't fit what the board had initially intended, because this request did originally come to me, was kind of delegated to me to see if we could get this up and going. And it, actually, my idea, for better or worse, that purpose this foundation. So now it's, you know, they know that it's uh, something that the board wants. They want to make sure that they're meeting the goals that were set out for
So I just wanted to be clear that the, the liaison is still, in fact, what it is, liaison. And so Shipman and Good, and Goodwin are still working with the committee to help with all of that, right? That's what they've hired they had for, right? So, so nothing's really changed since the last meeting in terms of what they're looking for?
No, correct. Okay, thank you.
All right. Yeah.
Um, so this is where I'm having a little bit of like trouble with this, is that it is feeling like in the moment, the conversation is talking about as if this is now of like, an entity of the board. Like, if we're going there and we're telling them how to set it up, and they're asking for our expertise, this was really delegated. Like, when we first had this conversation, this came from administration. So to me, it almost seems more like it would be more appropriate for administration to be involved. Because why is the board directing a community on how to spend funds to support education? I'm just like, this is going, it's new, and I know we're still coming up with it, and I know it's, it's a wonderful opportunity for us to receive more funds that are outside of the budget and outside of, you know, what we feel like, you know, we're able to accomplish. But it, it's fuzzy. It's like the financially
If you think about it, the education foundation, the sole purpose is to support the goals of the district. And it's not up to them to choose what those goals are. It, it's no different than if you think about a PTO that's supporting a school. The PTO doesn't decide that the school colors are going to change, or that the school is no longer going to host the annual Mr. Chappagh, but that's not up to the PTO. But the PTO can support those things if the school sets that as a goal for which they're seeking support. So it's, you know, they don't have the control to make decisions in the school buildings, but what they want is they want to support the decisions that are being made. And some of those will be administrative level, and some of them have to be board level. This is the entity that will approve the use of those funds. I mean, that's what, it'll come that way, or? No, so it, it's more about establishing the greater goal. Like, do we some educate, just to give you an example, there are some education foundations in Connecticut that don't just support school districts, public school districts. They support the education of community members, sometimes for higher education. Um, sometimes they support before and after-school programs that have nothing to do with the district, but they're still education foundations. So this education foundation is, is being established at the request of the district. So now they want to know, okay, so how are we going to support you? What do you, what are the areas that you're seeking support? Because what if, what if the board decides they don't want turf fields? Then we don't want a turf field campaign, we don't want turf fields. But they can't make that decision for us.
I don't know. I, I feel like it's very open-ended still, and that I, I, you know, I, I just don't want to, this to get away or get ahead of us, where, you know, one of us is making decisions where all of us should be discussing more about what is overarching even goals.
Not yet.
Because I still don't understand entirely the structure. I still don't understand, you know, how that fundraising and financing is going to work or what projects we want to work on, because I totally agree with you. I am so on board for sending kids to Space Camp. But that's one of so many things that we could be discussing. And I just don't know if we're at the right place to start advising when we aren't all entirely entirely even sure what this is going to.
You, you're right, we're not. But we have to start. And I think the way to start it is, is to take the survey of what they've got, what, what they're, what they expect their capabilities to be, what they're looking for in terms of the shape of goals, the, the panoply of goals, what exactly they're trying to accomplish. And then we'll come back here, discuss it, and send some marching orders over to them to answer the questions that they have. And I think that's the process.
So what you're doing is exploratory then, not that you're self-appointed.
No, I'm not self-appointing. I'm going to talk with them, try to see what it is they want from us and how best for us to deliver it, and then I will bring them back.
I'd love for them to kind of like do.
That may be, that may be part of what we do.
Like presentation.
It, it's probably the kind of thing where we really want to bring them in touch with us as a group. That would be my thought of how best to do it. But I just want to go there and have that first meeting, that first exploratory meeting, try to get the lay of the land and then figure out the best way to get them what they want, which is probably to come here. That would be my guess.
Now, just to piggyback a little bit of what Stephanie just said, I think it's just important that, um, regardless of the excitement of wanting to send a student to space camp or not, it's a collective. Right? It's the board, it, so you're.
It might, it might be in connection with the administration.
Well, of course, that's, I think that's kind of what Stephanie's saying is that we wouldn't want one, the liaison to be the person on behalf of the board to make those kinds of decisions, correct? Stephanie, is that what we're saying?
Yes.
So, and I, and my, my interpretation of what Nicole was requesting last week is, seems to sound the same as today, is really just having somebody that's on the board to communicate what's being discussed at the meetings and bring it back here and not necessarily going there with all the dreams and ideas and then coming back and then making the decisions on behalf of.
No.
I just wanted that clarity.
Yeah, no, I, I don't think that's the intent. I think the intent is.
Sounded a little bit like that beginning, but I'm glad that we've.
No.
We've circled around that.
No, no, we, we.
That's great.
I, I, I don't think that was the, I don't think that was the intent, but I think that we, we need to, we need to make sure that we have a facility, we create a facility for the board to communicate its, its, what it wants and, and to the, to the foundation. That's the idea.
Cause it's not one, it's not one person's, um, it's everybody.
Of course it is.
Great.
Of course it is. That, that's the idea. Okay. So we, we need to move on. Um, Superintendent's report.
Okay, so as you can imagine, everyone was anticipating the solar eclipse today and, and a lot of planning went into this, coordinating this event. Um, not only from the educational point of view, but also, uh, safety. And I, I have to say, and just, I was outside with the kids at WPS, um, and I touched base with the other principals. And students listened, they followed directions, they were super, super excited because they got to see it. Um, and it was really, really cool. And I, I just wanted to, if I can, um, pull this up. So Freezo actually sent a, a message, thank you Ben, um, to everyone about his experience. He took a field trip, if you recall, anyone who wanted to go up to New, to New York where it was total, um, eclipse. Um, so he said, what did we experience? It started getting cold and the light changed to a weird kind of washed out gray. When the last of the sun was covered, a beautiful silvery light surrounded the moon's sun. We saw Venus, we saw Saturn, and the horizon ki- had a kind of sunset glow all around. A small flock of confused seeming birds flew across the field. Later, when I asked my students who were with me, what, how'd you like it? They said, amazing, totally worth it. Thank you so much. So I just thought I'd share that. That was just a little snippet from Freezo on his way home. But he also said, we're on the way home now, moving about 12 miles an hour on I-87. So, uh, everyone and everyone is coming back from that, that area. So I thought that was cool to share. Um, so I also know many people, uh, were, were, uh, able to see Matilda over the weekend at Chapag. Um, and last week, our elementary students, um, went to, uh, had an in-house field trip to view a condensed version of the play. And the students came back so positive, they absolutely loved it. And I just want to thank the staff, the students, and the entire crew, uh, for that production. And, uh, I was just talking to so many people over the weekend and even this morning, who couldn't wait to share their own experiences and voice their opinions on the standout performances of, of all of the students and just the level of artistry in the production as well. So congratulations to everyone who was involved in Matilda. It was just extraordinary. Um, I also quickly wanted to mention, um, a field trip that some of our agri-science students are attending. Uh, they're going to, um, Wyman Call High School, uh, in Wallingford, and the focus is learning, uh, parliamentary procedures. Um, and so I wanted to mention that trip because usually I, we put that on the agenda, but it was just, it, it happens to be just like a mile, uh, where we don't even, we never even had to report it, but I wanted to let you know about that trip because I think it's important. Um, and finally, as you can imagine, a little unnerving, uh, on Friday, uh, with the tremors from the earthquake. And, uh, I will say that the students kind of took it in stride. I think it was the adults that were a little more shaken up, um, which is typical. Um, but it gave, I just wanted to tell you, and I think I shared this in my Sunday highlights, it gave, um, me pause, honestly, all of us, because it really was, um, a window into the importance of communication. And I think just from my experience on many levels with emergencies, and I was, um, a little disturbed by, um, the overload. And it wasn't just school messenger. I talked to colleagues in other districts where they use the Blackboard platform. Same thing happened. You have to think about the entire Eastern Seaboard of schools and colleges, everyone trying to communicate. I just wanted to get a message out, like calm down parents, there's, kids are safe. Um, and you know, what was happening a regular day, nothing needs to change, but we will make sure that we're, you know, comforting students who might be upset and so on and so forth. It took me, it seemed to me like five hours, but it really only took, you know, less than an hour, but that was long enough. I was, you know, we were all talking and we're going to talk again as administrators. That was too long for, for me. So we are reaching out, certainly everyone is to school messenger and talking about that. Um, and also, how do we kind of get around that in the future if that should ever happen again? What other forms of communication should we be using to make sure that we have that, you know, a better opportunity to communicate, um, quickly, um, with everyone? So I just wanted to tell you about that, because that was a little, but everybody was fine and there was an aftershock too, I heard. I didn't feel it, but others did.
Yep.
God, we are not in school. But, um, okay, so one, one personnel, um, item, and that's an appointment, Sydney Akinquisk, who's in agri-science operations assistant substitute at S V S. So welcome to Sydney. And that's all I have this evening.
Okay. One of the Treasurers report.
First, uh, there was an earthquake? Oh, excuse me. Um, so, uh, basically, uh, we went through the numbers today. Um, th- the, with the exception of propane, which has been the bane of our existence because of the price on it, all the other numbers look good. Uh, we, we currently, as of the end of the third school quarter, um, have a surplus or have funds available of 12.89%. Now, that is, uh, obviously we've got a lot of encumbrances that are already taken out before. The one bad note, I guess, is, is that last year at this time, we were 5% higher than that. Um, but I think that we're going to find out that, that, that by the end of the year, we're going to come out pretty close to even. Um, one anomaly that I noticed, uh, or that Nicole pointed out is, uh, on these budgets that we all received, you talks about if you have a hundred percent left, all the way down to negative amounts left. Uh, we had one column where we have 102% left, which I found interesting, how you can have more left than you start with, but we did. And so that is my report. And if anyone has any questions about the numbers, I think, as I remember, everyone got one in their packet.
Thank you very much, Alex. We'll move on to committee reports, curriculum and educational programming committee.
Um, nothing new. Our next meeting is May 6th.
At advance, Joe.
Uh, the Board of Directors met, uh, this past Thursday, uh, the 4th. Um, during this meeting, we approved the applications for the healthy food option and food beverages option certificates. Uh, we also had a presentation of the annual audit report for 2223. Uh, and we were also given a preview of the current budget for the 2324, uh, fiscal year. Our next meeting is an in-person meeting in May, and we will approve, uh, the next year's budget. That's all I have.
Very good. Uh, Alex?
Okay, I believe that we, we had an earthquake now. But don't try and convince me about an eclipse. So, um, we had an F and O meeting today and we discussed many things. Uh, one of the course, which was the numbers, which we just discussed. Um, also, we discussed RFPs that are going out, but Nicole and Don are putting out three by the end of the month. Um, uh, one is for the electric panel at Booth. Uh, second one is for the doors here, and then a fire alarm, uh, here to deal with the possibility of lightning. Um, the only other thing that we, we did not put an RFP out for was, uh, we got three bids to do, uh, the blackboards and remove those. Uh, we're going to test for asbestos before we start working on those. Uh, we budgeted them, assuming there is asbestos, so the numbers could only come out better, uh, couldn't come out worse. Um, we talked about the use of the facilities here and what fees should be, uh, uh, charged for different uses of our, our, our facilities. Um, that's preliminary, we're still going through the numbers, what's it make sense? How much should it be if you want to rent, uh, the, the, uh, uh, the theater, um, uh, things of that nature. Um, we're not ready really even present numbers. The first, the F and O committee was the first time they saw them. Uh, we also talked about tuition, uh, two different types of tuition. The tuition in and the, uh, Sherman, uh, con- where they will contract to send their students here. Uh, we're still working on both a contract for that and the numbers for, uh, 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 tuition in. When we've come to some kind of decision, we will bring it to the full board for their review and comments and suggestions. And the last thing, which we sort of got boxed out because of timing, was about the food service. And we discussed, uh, possible, uh, remedies. There's been some complaints about, uh, the chicken sandwiches. I remember hearing that complaint about a year ago, uh, came up again. Uh, uh, we're sort of caught between a rock and a hard place because, uh, you know, we, we have to stay within the, uh, uh, the, uh, National School Lunch Program guidelines. And, uh, uh, if we don't, uh, uh, we can have more flexibility, but it's going to cost a lot more. Um, I mean significantly a lot more. Um, and, uh, while this is something that Nicole pointed out, over time, the numbers may drop because more kids will use the program. Um, uh, as of right now, about 80% of our kids are bringing in their own food, uh, for lunch. So, uh, uh, we're reviewing that and that is it, because that got us to 6:59 and we had to adjourn.
Policy Committee, our next meeting is the, uh, 29th of April. Uh, Negotiations Committee, we're in process with three negotiations. We've had our preliminary meeting with council. We're waiting to have meetings set up with the three unions that we're negotiating with. Um, Strategic Long Range Planning, Jen?
Nothing to report, we meet in May.
Okay. Old business, we have none. New business, to consider and if appropriate, approve non-renewals for staff positions for 2024, uh, 2025. When we get a term, we'll do the sweeping.
Okay, thank you. So I did want to preface this, that all of, and I'll, I will read all of the names at the various schools. These are all non-renewals, but they are all based on one-year positions. So everyone on the list, and there are a variety, there are some, there are two who are retired, who were, were helping out. There are others who were, uh, building subs, who can reapply, because we do this every year with, with building subs. So just to go through the names, um, Elizabeth Ackerman Elementary, WPS on a one-year. Um, Gabrielle Anello, literacy tutor at Burnham, also, um, being non-renewed on a one-year. A math tutor, Caitlin Barksdale at S V S. Um, that position was, um, eliminated as we talked through the budget. Um, Chris Coe, and, and it was a one-year anyway. Um, Chris Coe, special ed teacher. Um, that's, um, at S V S. And that was a long-term sub-position, uh, covering another teacher who was out on leave. Uh, we have an ed assistant, again, um, long-term, uh, sub, uh, Megan Chrissy, and that was, uh, WPS. Um, again, covering another teacher, and that, um, was ending this year. Uh, Lisa Holmes, who you know is retired as a special ed teacher who was helping out. Um, that was a one-year position, as, uh, was Leslie Holz Grooby, who was helping out with the elementary Spanish, um, both instructing and helping out with curriculum. Brianna Killian, art teacher, long-term sub, um, at all the elementary schools, and she was supporting, uh, the art teacher who was out, um, on leave. Uh, Grace Kip, um, Emily Lane, Grace Kip is at, um, Booth and Burnham for a one-year as a building sub. Emily Lane is at WPS, was a one-year, again, a building sub. Mackenzie Schaefer, uh, was at S V S, again, a one-year. All those three employees are building subs and can reapply. Uh, we have an elementary, um, teacher, WPS, Rosalinda Schneider, that was a one-year position, hired for this year only. A literacy tutor, Kim, Kimberly Schram at Burnham, a one-year position. Um, and that was grant-funded, so the grant ends. And then finally, um, David Workhoven, a building sub here at Chapag as well, and that's a one-year. And as I said, with the other three, he can reapply. Any one of them can reapply to be a building sub long-term. So those are the non-renewals for this year.
There are motions to approve the non-renewals without my votes. You're a second? Move the second to further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All those abstaining? Okay? That motion passes. If there is no objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned by consent at 8:44. And as promised, you will get to the game.
Yes. Well, I hadn't even noticed that.
Yeah. I know. We're not.
Yeah, we, we took that off. We're not ready for it. Oh. I, 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 I'm sorry. Can, can we, can we like hold the adjournment for one second? There, there was an item under new business number two, we're not ready to discuss that yet, so I passed it. And I'm sorry, I, uh, didn't mention that. Now the adjournment can occur at 8:45.